I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. I have two items on the agenda. Item number one is approval of minutes from July 25, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or corrections during our round? So we have all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, permission to bid contract 22-10 Tree Charity, 2023. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, John. I'm just going to take one quick second here and do a quick introduction. Rick, if you don't mind standing up. Rick Fox is our new Parks Project Manager. Rick has been with us for about four weeks now. You might notice his name is on the memo for this evening's item. We thought we'd give him a break and let me handle this for him for one more time. Rick comes to us from Ames, Iowa. He worked for a private consultant there for a couple of years, and we took him from Iowa State University. So we are very fortunate to have Rick on staff. So thank you, Rick, and thank you, counsel. This evening, we are requesting permission to bid contract 22-10 Tree Charity. This is our annual tree planting contract. Since the memo has gone out and went into your council packets for this evening, we did make some adjustments to the pre-bid estimates. This contract will include the planting of 285 trees. In your memo, it says 260, so we bumped that up to 285. And we were able to refine our cost estimates to $91,200. So that is a little bit of a difference there. We did some phone calls and some estimating, and we feel more comfortable with the $91,200 estimate. This estimate includes a contingency, hand digging around utilities, and 14 weeks of post-planting irrigation. The funding will include the Tree Charity Fund, previously funded Free Street Tree and Emerald Ashport Funds, Urban Forestry Grant Funds, operating funds, Riverwalk Phase Four Funds, and 2023 capital budget funds. Again, each one, the Tree Charity account pays for the new trees and new residential neighborhoods. The Phase Four Riverwalk, obviously for Phase Four, so we have lots of different funding sources to cover all types of priorities out there for planting of these trees. Our goal is to bid the project now to get favorable pricing, and we want to get on the contractor's spring planting schedule. The trees will be planted in new residential developments, replacement of street trees that have been removed for various reasons, the Riverwalk, and we are also targeting several post-road construction projects. This year, we removed several trees on Laurel Drive North because of road construction. Our goal is then to follow up for a 2023 street tree planting along that stretch, replace some of those trees, and fill any of the vacancies there. We've already sent letters out to some of the residents, or the residents in that area, so they wouldn't have any surprises next spring. Let them know that we're going to show up next year and do some planting. And also along Villa Park Drive, we were anticipating, I believe it's 25 replacement trees there. We had that sidewalk replacement contract that was kind of in limbo the last two years, things like that. So kind of a variety of where we are planting all these trees. The majority of them are street trees, and the majority of them are at request of our residents. So thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, Randy, move. And Justice?
It just comes from over there.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mike?
Yeah, John, real quick, if you don't mind. Is there a way for folks to request to have trees removed or to have trees added?
Absolutely. If anyone has any questions whatsoever about their trees, give us a call. If something, your tree is sick, if it's dying, anything like that, call us. What we do is phone call comes here to City Hall, a service request is generated down to the workshop, and one of our arborists would respond, talk to the homeowner about whatever the particular issue is. If someone is looking at planting, or they want a tree planted, they go right on our website. It's our Free Street Tree program. They don't have to call us. If they want, we like talking to our customers. Come on in if you want, or call. But they can do it right online. We have all the trees available. They can fill the form out at that point in time. Our staff will come out this time of year, September, October, do site inspections to make sure there's enough room and all that stuff. And if there isn't, we always contact the resident to say, hey, you don't have room, things like that. But no, for park-related, park and forestry-related items, number one, phone calls, park facilities; number two is tree concerns for park and forestry. So we welcome the phone calls.
I know you guys are really good about that. I just wanted you to make that point. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And welcome to West Bend, Rick Fox. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee meeting for October 17, 2022. We've got nine items on the agenda, first being the approval of the minutes for the Finance Committee regular meeting October 3, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number two, resolution accepting donations from Walmart.
Chief Kudek. Good evening. You have a resolution before you to accept the donation from our great corporate partner of Walmart. A couple of weeks ago, you heard from Chief Deering, and they donated $1,000 to the police department. They also donated $1,000 to the fire department. The resolution tonight accepts that, puts it into our smoke detector fund so that we continue to provide free smoke detectors and carbon dioxide detectors to our residents.
Motion to approve. Second.
Awesome. It's great service. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mark.
I just want to thank the fire department for a vibrant fire safety program, and I understand you partnered with one of our local pizza places.
Correct. Domino's Pizza, and then we deliver pizzas, and then when we deliver pizzas, we check for smoke detectors, and if they needed batteries, we supplied batteries. If they needed the smoke detectors themselves, we installed it or wrote their name down, and we'll get back to them to install smoke detectors.
How many people got free pizzas?
I didn't check.
I know you gave out a lot of smoke detectors.
I'm sure we did. Yeah, Captain Aslan heads that program up and heads up our Fire Prevention Bureau, along with that free smoke detector program. And if you know Kenny, you know he's passionate about fire safety and fire protection, so he's a great guy for that job.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Agenda item number three, resolution to accept donations to the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department. Did you get it, John? Yeah, did it right. Okay. Mike, go ahead.
All right. This evening, we have the wonderful opportunity to present some very impressive donations to the council and to our community. The first donation of $1,250 was donated by Delta Defense LLC for sponsorship of the 2022 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. The next donation of $1,250 was donated by Killian Management Services Incorporated for sponsorship of the 2022 Dirty Ninja Mud Run. The next donation of $2,500 is donated by the West Bend Community Foundation's West Bend Mutual Insurance Company Charitable Fund for sponsorship of the 2022 Dirty Ninja Mud Run. The next donation of $2,500 donated by Bank 59 for sponsorship of the Dirty Ninja Mud Run. The presenting sponsor again this year was Russ Darrell Group. Their sponsorship of $5,000 again supported the Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. And the last, but certainly not least, donation for the Mud Run was a value of $4,500 donated by our Friends of Parks and Recreation for 2,000 lunches for the Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. That is part of the participant sponsorship packet that they get. And I can say, we did have another record year this year, 2,397 kids that ran in that event. So definitely a community event directed towards our future, our kids. The next donation of $4,529 was donated by various citizens for the All Abilities Playground, Fence Picket Fundraiser, and general donations to this project. The first donation of $1,000 was from Alan and Ann Pauley. The next donation of $1,370 is from the AES Companies, Erby's Roundup Fundraiser. Tom Limbach donated $1,000 for fence pickets and general donation. Mayor Christoph E. Jenkins did a small personal fundraiser for $1,059. And the last donation for the All Abilities of $100 was from the Byron family. The next donation of $400 comes to us from the West Bend Disc Golf Club for development of the Riverside Disc Golf Course. The next donation of $5,000 was donated by the Early Risers Kiwanis of West Bend for the Library Basement Recreation Center. This is their third installment of a $50,000 gift to this project. The next donation is a value of $4,075 donated by the Gears Group for a shipping container to use to be used for storage of equipment out at Glacier Blue Hills. That is our off-road biking group that is out there supporting us with the development of that property. And the final donation of $182 came to us by 1840 Brewing Company LLC for the July Beer Garden that was held in Riverside Park. This is to benefit the Recreation Division. Again, thank you to these donors really for making West Bend a pretty awesome community. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mike.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. And again, what a generous community we live in. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We got more of them? Yeah, we do. Okay. Agenda item number four, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds Park Trust, Park Impact Fees.
This evening, our department is requesting approval to transfer $260,000 from the Park Trust Park Impact Fees account to an expense account to be used for costs associated with construction of the downtown Riverwalk Phase Four. This is the area from the north of Washington Street, from the dam going north. These funds will be used specifically for the development of the Dam Island, installation of new electrical services, new lighting, new railings, seating area near the dam bridge, river access stairs, and riprap. As of September 30, we had $589,000 in the Impact Fees account. Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I think that's it with you, Mike. Thank you very much. Agenda item number five is a resolution to accept Wisconsin Department of Administration Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act federal stimulus funds. It's not easy to say. Mr. Mark, thank you, sir.
This is a federal program, or federal stimulus funds that were available through the state Department of Administration. We ascertained that the airport was eligible for reimbursement and expenses from March of 20 through 2021. This first one is for $23,000, and the money was, we made the grant application, and the end of September, money was received the first week of October. And in order for this to go forward, we need you to approve a resolution appropriating it back to the airport's expense funds.
Motion to approve.
This is for reimbursement.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number six, resolution to accept Wisconsin Department of Administration Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funding.
And this is very similar. This is for the CARES Act monies that were available. This is for $69,000, and as with the other one, we submitted it at the end of September, received the money in October, and we're asking you to appropriate to the airport expense funds.
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Agenda item number seven, resolution to accept Wisconsin Department of Tourism Joint Effort Marketing Grant Funds. Jess, take her away.
Thanks. I just wanted to first thank the Wisconsin Department of Tourism for awarding us with this two-year grant worth $5,000. We received it first for the 2020 event, which was canceled, and were able to use it in 2021, and again in 2022. The event since 2019 has grown by 449 participants, and this funding really helped us promote the Dirty Ninja Mud Run and attract more than 70% from outside of West Bend youth participants. So, thank you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jess.
Thanks.
Agenda item number eight, approve the 2023 capital budget and five-year plan. Jay, take her away.
Thanks, Justice. You all have the capital improvement plan in front of you. Many of the department heads that have agenda or items on that plan are here in the audience. If you have some more detail, ask Justice how he'd like me to go through it. I think just talking through on my screen, it's page 12 of 20. It's the list of the 2023 capital projects. So I'll just run through those first, maybe quickly, and then if there are follow-up questions, we can maybe take them at the end. At the same time, we're talking about the future years, '24 through '27. First item is the City Hall parking lot at 325,000. We are recommending funding that with funds on hand, some of our ARPA money. If you recall, we've received 3.3 million of the ARPA money, and we have not expended any of it to date. So this would be the first of the funds that we are recommending to be funded, to be expended and funded on a capital project like the City Hall parking lot, which has been on our CIP for a while, and quite frankly, doesn't compete very well against roads that need to be done, and fire trucks and garbage trucks within other departments. But is really important, and our City Hall employees, you know, use the lot on a daily basis. We do have lighting recommended as part of this 325, so we improve the safety of the lot for our employees. It's been patched over time and is really in need of a total reconstruction. So that's what this is and gets that done for us. The safety emergency vehicle preemption, that's the traffic signal light improvements so that they turn green when our fire trucks go by. That's in an intersection. We attempt to do one a year. It's a very long process. If you recall, we stepped up that process with some grant work that through engineering, the HISA funds, we've been able to secure and knock out a bunch of the intersections at one time. This continues to do an intersection at a time, and hopefully, eventually, we'll be able to get this one out of our five-year plan. Annual sidewalk at $100,000, that's a reoccurring cost. I am going to ask Max to speak to the MS4 in a bit when we get into maybe discussion of the specifics, but that's for our permit total maximum daily load is the TMDL acronym. It's a permitting requirement that he's worked really closely with our consulting engineer and the DNR to come up with these items. It's the first time that this is hitting our CIP and will be in a relatively big way in years to come. Pavement maintenance program, the PMP, shows the total of 2.5 million, and that takes care of the next several items in engineering. We typically have been, so the last couple of years, funding $2 million in roads, borrowing a total of $3 million. So this CIP list is, on an annual basis, attempting to get to $2 million in roads and then an additional million that all the other departments kind of divvy up. This year, based on all the conversation with increase, a reason to increase spending on roads and some talk of an advisory referendum just a couple of months ago, thought prudent to recommend additional spending and using the ARPA money. So you can see that $678,000 hanging off in the column three. That's recommending to knock out Laurel Drive, which was scheduled for this year to be reconstructed. And as we were successful in Rusko, Water, and Paradise, the engineering of, or the design of Paradise, for the STP funds that we were competitive and were able to receive. In addition, Main Street, you see at $100,000. That construction of downtown Main Street is way more than $100,000. Those are just small amounts or 20% cost shares of those roads. And by adding all of those to the 2023 plan, the only way we could still fit in Laurel was to fund it with, recommend funding it with ARPA money. So that's the recommendation that you have before you. Again, attempting to do additional roads. I will say that the 2024 through '27 plan, the five-year plan that you have, shows the spending of the entire 3.3 million with maybe a little in reserve, because as the numbers come in, they're going to move around a little bit. But we have until 2026 to spend the funds for ARPA. A good problem to have. Going on to fire, a pretty modest request in fire this year, updating apparatus floor in Station 3 and a pickup retrofit. Server replacements in IT roof in library. Now, this one probably will further, some further discussion will be warranted. We borrowed last year $344,000, split 50-50 with the library fund and the capital improvement. We each borrowed for $172,000 with the hopes of completing the roof in 2022. Well, there were no shingles available to do the red roof in 2022, and Mark and his team have been monitoring that. They've also experienced a significant price increase in shingles and labor for the opportunity to do that roof. We're confident that the shingles are now available, and if we add this $125,000 to the $344,000 that we've already bonded for, that we'll be able to do the roofing project in 2023. Mark's plan would be, if this is approved, to go ahead and bid that project in December or January coming up, and then have the time awarded so that they can order the shingles and actually get them in sometime in 2023 to get the shingles up and on the roof. So, and there's another agenda item here, or another item in this list for library interior restoration due to water infiltration, leaky roof. So some patching of drywall to the tune of 20 grand, and $40,000 for some rusty doors, some exterior doors that have really rusted out over time. You can visually see them if you walk around the exterior of the library building. Street tree planting, this was formerly known as EAB. We're mostly past that due to the great work that parks have done over the years. And Mike just shared with you a minute ago about the importance of street tree planting, replacing trees along streets that we are able to redo. This continues that program. Another high priority for the Parks Department is Regner Beach House parking lot. The Regner Beach House has recently been remodeled and is starting to get used by many. It's been a really cool community project. This shows a 50-50 funding of CIP, and then the remaining funds on hand through the mutual mall proceeds. So the expenditure of this 170 for mutual mall funds would exhaust the funding that's available. We use the other remaining funds in mutual mall to complete the beach house project. The $113,000, the very next item, repair the existing beach house parking lot. Mike can explain this in more detail, but as we construct the $340,000 parking lot, we're going to further destroy the existing parking lot that we have to access the area where we need to construct the new lot. This $113,000 fixes that. And then there's another, if you skip ahead a couple, there's another smaller item for 30 grand. All three of those added together is just under $500,000 to improve the, most of the asphalt around Regner. Again, a really important item in order to fully utilize that new asset that we have. Couple of smaller items within Regner for the camp lodge, and two modest items within police. So police and fire being, again, smaller amounts this year in 2023, recommendation have really allowed some of these other departments to gain some pent-up projects that they've had for some time. The last is Public Works, and the $225,000 reflects a new patrol truck or a snowplow truck. Those trucks take approximately two years now to be constructed and delivered. So this, if this is approved in 2023, will take delivery in 2025, which is kind of crazy, but that's how things work these days. We are, and you'll see in the five-year plan, we're really stacked up on 2003, 2005 trucks back in the day. Those years, city council really bought a bunch of trucks, and Doug and his team do a nice job of recommending replacement of the worst one on an annual basis. We also had a garbage truck that was in here that was competing for these funds, and we're recommending leasing that garbage truck through the leasing program and funding it through operations. You will not see it on the five-year plan, but it was one of those situations where we needed to do both "and," and the CIP just wasn't allowing it to happen. Total spending of 4.1, $3 million in borrowing, and then 1.173 of other funds, and I already talked through them, about $1 million of ARPA money and $170,000 of remaining mutual mall money. Alderman Model, do you want me to pause there before we go into the five-year plan and answer any questions?
No, that's not a bad idea, and thanks to you and your staff. I can only imagine the number of hours it takes to make all these numbers work. It's incredible. Go ahead, Jed.
Just a quick question. So Water Street reconstruction, that's not part of the TIFF district?
The extent of it included in TIFF? Mark, I guess I don't even know that. We're funding it with, yeah, it is, because we're funding the 20% out of the TIFF.
That is correct.
Yeah. And the other 80 is coming from SDP.
Well, I guess my point is, why, if it's a TIFF expense, why would it be in here?
I can represent that the TIFF right now is, the rest of those TIFs, rest of TIFF 12 is predominantly Pago-type situations, that there is not enough revenue stream to do Water Street at this time without another development occurring adjacent to it.
Oh, yeah. So we have talked about the possibility of a development that has not come to fruition yet. If that development came to fruition, that potential could be there to fund the 20% needed.
Okay.
But we have a SDP funding for 2023. Thanks, Mark, for talking through that timing.
You got it, Jed? Got it? Any other questions? Mark?
Yeah, I, under Public Works pavement, or Engineering Pavement Maintenance Program, we have line items throughout the five years of the five-year plan for Mastic. It seems that that's the same character of material as asphalt and stone and sand that we treat as work, as materials. In other words, shouldn't that move into our general budget as an operations expense and move out of the capital plan where we're borrowing?
Yeah, we started with the Mastic program a handful of years ago when we were contracting with Washington County, and we've been using $75,000 as an expenditure for some time. We migrated from contracting with the county to contracting with a private entity to knock out Mastic placement, placement of Mastic. This past year, 2022, we were able to use the funding for Mastic to actually purchase the Mastic machine, which is exciting that we have our own now. And you saw that in the Friday newsletter last week that shared that good news with you. I understand the question, and that would be a great goal. Mark and I did talk about this a couple of times in the last few days. Great goal to accomplish in future year budgets. There are a few items on this list, for sure, that are gray from the, it's certainly a product that lasts several years, so it qualifies as a CIP component, but it could also be an operational component and funded in future years. I shared that we're already raising the levy a considerable amount and the rate a considerable amount that I didn't feel good about recommending an additional, in this case, it'd be about two and a half cents. The 30 cents represent, 30,000 represents one cent approximately within our budget. So this 75,000 would raise the levy or the rate again another two and a half cents. But if this body wanted to add that, you could certainly do that.
And I did talk to Max too earlier today about that, about the same issue, and he would... And I did talk to Max, too, earlier today about that, about the same issue, and he kind of deferred to the rest of the council and stuff to talk about that, not for, obviously not for this year, but future years, it does kind of make sense. Is that, did you have another question, Mark?
I think everything else got taken care of. Yeah, I'm good.
Mayor Jenkins, thank you, Mark.
I don't mean to create any infighting between districts, but just looking at the list of roads themselves, and maybe Max can give some clarification. I know from representing District Four prior, some of these streets like Butternut and Maplewind, while they certainly are not in the greatest conditions, to me, I look at further in the list, I think it's 2024, for Kilborn, we're looking at doing designs with ARPA monies. In my mind, I feel like Kilborn is more of a thoroughfare that is utilized and at least in worse, if not the same conditions, that to me, it warrants being a higher priority than Hawthorne and Butternut. So, Max, can you tell me otherwise?
Good evening. Thank you. So, the timing of Kilborn is because we can get funding for Kilborn with the STPU program. And I talked to Jacob Varanis from DOT to know when we would have the next opportunity to apply for funding, and he told me that it would most likely be fall of 2023, which would put our design in '24, and then land acquisition '25, construction in '26, and that's why the schedule reflects this timing. So, because we are limited on the streets that we can apply STP funding for, we try to schedule those streets on the schedule of the STP funding, and then in the meantime, do the other streets that cannot benefit from that funding.
All right. Well, I understand, but thank you for explaining to the public, and sorry, Alderman, Dolnick, I was trying to fight for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Max, as long as you're up here, I called you earlier about the, I think it was the latex pavement markings. I'm still going to have to fight for Barton North Main Street and getting lines painted there, and we did talk about possibly putting the price of the paint in the PMP budget and then having it switch over like we do with the Mastic. Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. Basically, at this moment, the paint that we do in-house, so when we do parking lot paintings or parking stall paintings, it's done in-house by our Department of Public Works, and that's mostly because it's a different setup than painting lines in the road or symbols and things like that. And we found that doing it in-house is more cost-effective for that type of work. And so, Public Works has in their budget the amount that they need to do this type of painting. Now, if the city decides to move that amount from the Public Works budget to the engineering budget, like I said, it's, to me, it's all city money, and whether it comes from this account or that account, but then I don't do all the accounting, so that would be something to bring up to maybe finance and Jay, and maybe that could be worked out in the future. We have no problem working out, like we do for the Mastic with Public Works.
Sure. Awesome. Okay. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Oh, go ahead, yeah, I'm sorry, finish the.
Max, as long as you're here, would you mind sharing with council the MS4 stuff that's been in?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Thank you, Jay, sorry.
So, as part of our, we have a DNR MS4 permit that is being renewed every five years, and every five years, we have to make progress, and then we get new requirements. So, we've been going through this process over the past couple decades, and the new permit that we had was requiring for us to first do analysis and identify projects that would help with the TMDL program, removing total suspended solids and phosphorus from any stormwater discharge from the city area going into the waters of the state. So, we're about in the middle of our permit period, which lasts five years every time, so we started in 2019 to 2024, and we did the analysis with SEH. We had a consultant on the contract. They did the analysis, and then they identified the needs and identified potential projects that would help us reach those goals. And you'll see in the five-year plan, and as you see here in the 2023 capital project proposal, that we put some of those projects sprinkled over the years. We do small projects every year trying to reach that goal. And so, that's why this is the first time that we have this in the capital project is because it was not a requirement before, it is a requirement now, so we have to comply with that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max. Did you want to continue with the five-year?
Yeah, so I think that was a good time, thanks, Max, to scroll down to the next few sheets and talk through the five-year plan if there are any questions. A couple of you brought some items to me of question, and I was able to talk with the department head and gain a response. So, I think, well, first of all, the coloring scheme, the items that were pushed from 2023 request into future years are highlighted in yellow. If you're curious as to all the items that we had to move out of 2023 in order to make a recommendation of a balanced CIP, that's where that occurred. There is a large alarming number in the library area, that million dollars for HVAC. That is a new item, alarming because it's a big number, a new item that came to our CIP this year. It had not been in the five-year plan in previous years, but due to some discovery of in the library with our building maintenance, there's significant upgrades that need to be done to our heating and cooling plant. We certainly weren't able to fund it or recommend funding it in 2023, and found out that it's not like going to die and freeze the library in the next couple of days, thankfully, but it's something that we have to keep an eye on and see whether and how we can approach that in the future. That's a big number of significant note. There's a large expenditure in fire, maybe, I don't know if I want to say skipping engineering, but I, if you look through the engineering five-year plan, you'll see that the blue lines represent the ARPA funding, and Kilborn and Max already highlighted for you that that's only 20% of the cost, so there's significant SDP funds that we are anticipating receiving in order to fund that road that's in dire need of repair. And then the continued blue on the next page shows more CIP funding to knock out additional roads other than the, in addition to the 2 million that we are planning to do annually. Now to fire, there is a fire engine that, number 995, Fire Engine 12, it's a 2,000 model that is in need of replacement in the next few years, just like patrol trucks or plow trucks and garbage trucks. These things take several years to build. Chief's been working on this vehicle already with his team, and we anticipate funding it in 2024 and 2025. He did share with me that 350 is probably a little light based on how costs have gone up, so that's likely to grow to like 400 and 400 over the next two years. So, another big chunk of change that's going to come out of our CIP in order to fund a priority for the city of keeping the fire trucks up to stuff. There's a couple of items within fire worthy of note. The ramp-up paging, the very first item, shows a $0 amount. Chief and I talked about that today after Alderman Allen raised that as a question. Good catch that there is no funding amount tied to that. If there is movement on a new fire station, and that takes place in the relatively near future, we won't need to worry about this item at existing stations that aren't getting, that it will not be seeing change. Chief is going to add a number for me to put it out in 2026 or 2027 to show, just in case we don't move forward with a new fire station, what that would cost and be added. And then the second item in fire of note is a grant that Chief was able to receive for thermal imaging cameras, so that item will be removed. It shows up as a $0 amount as well. They were able to receive a grant to fund those cameras. I don't know if I have any other specific highlights. There is a bunch of road need, there's a bunch of equipment need. If you scroll down to Public Works, I mentioned the 2003, 2005 vehicle dates. We bought a lot of stuff back in those years, and those items are coming due again. Doug recommends the replacing of the worst one, so it's not likely that we're going to recommend five or six $225,000 trucks in 2024, but they are all sitting out there right now as a placeholder. Any questions? I'll attempt to answer them or defer to the respective department head that's here.
Randy, go ahead.
Jay, I'm assuming we aren't using more of the ARPA funds in a particular year just because it's roads that we probably can't get engineered and run all at the same time? Is that correct?
Yeah, versus trying to knock out everything in 2023. That's a good question and a good point. We are pushing the limits of our engineering department and contracted engineer with this schedule already. And I'll share that, and this body knows that, that we've applied for a couple of grants that would further push those if we were fortunate enough to receive them, and that might mess with the schedule in a good way. If we're able to secure some additional grant funding, know that your staff is pursuing that at every opportunity, and we're out for some now, and we'll keep you posted as to the success of those if they come in or not.
This may be something the folks of West Bend should know, is that our staff is maxed out. We're doing as much as we possibly can on roads at this point. Jed, go ahead.
Mike, a quarter million skate park in 2024. Can you expand on that?
I was wondering about that, too.
Great question. So, the existing skate park is situated in a parking lot, basically is the scenario there. That skate park equipment, to say the least, is aged and probably needs to go to the landfill soon. We need to find a permanent location for a skate park in the city of West Bend. That location was supposed to be temporary, and I believe it's been there for about 10 years. I can tell you, some of the neighbors are not real happy with having a skate park there. They've been very patient. They've been very, very patient. So, we put that in a budget for an awareness aspect where, at some point in time, we either remove the equipment and not have a skate park in West Bend, or we start strongly thinking about where we would want or should put a skate park, and how are we going to pay for or something of that nature. It will not be cheap. It certainly will be a very expensive proposition, so.
Isn't that coming down as part of the district project? Isn't that, that's not going to be parking for them?
Not as far as, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So, would part of that 250,000 then be land acquisition as well?
If we don't own the property already, sure. Yep. The thing is with a skate park, it's not a playground, it's not a tennis court, it's a skate park. It's going to generate people that they're going to drive there, they're going to ride their bikes, their electric scooters, this and that, everything else. People are going to hang out there, there's going to be noise. So, most likely, we would, if we own the property already, we will look at probably one of our community parks, Regner Riverside Ridge Run, Quas Creek, things like that. We would probably want it somewhat centrally located near the Riverwalk, Geisenbon Trail. We would also want it located so it's easy access for the police and fire department. We would want electricity, fencing, lights, security cameras, et cetera, et cetera. So, if we're going to do this, I think we would want to do it correctly. The number we have there, we have talked to and visited several other communities in reference to costs associated with it, things like that. So, we do not have a fund set up as of yet for the skate park. We do for other projects, archery range, disc golf, things like that for the skate park at this point in time, we do not. So, it would be definitely park commission, maybe a resident type of committee. Certainly, we would want PD's voice in the discussion, things like that. So, we, if and when we do this, it would have to be, it would have to be the right location with the proper funding source, so.
Couldn't we have them just go down Barton Hill?
That works for me.
It's your district.
I'm telling you.
It's going to be a hard sell, Mike. Compared to streets, this is going to be a hard sell, but that'll be for next year.
Yeah, no, I completely agree. And part of the discussion, obviously, the district, that development, even the development in TIF 10, you know, the river shores area, things like that, we need some more parking in that area, and again, our existing, our current neighbors, again, they've been, they've been very patient. So, part of this is we just, if we're going to remove our existing equipment and remove it, throw it away, things like that, what's the plan for replacement if there is a plan? So, no, Jed, I completely agree. You know, priorities for this community, this governing body, roads, skate parks, nope, we get it. Yeah, absolutely.
Randy?
Just want to touch on that. I was on the original group that picked that location, and that was what, all the things you mentioned is why we went there at the time, but we also, if I remember correctly, knew that at some point it was going to have to be moved.
Right.
I guess when it comes to the point, I'd be curious to see how many people actually use it anymore. I mean, I see people down there, but I don't think it's used a lot. That'll be a discussion next year, but.
Yeah, no, it gets used. I think it's one of those, okay, if you take it away, there's going to be some outcry because you have it today, tomorrow you don't, you're going to have that particular situation. Part of our existing situation is it's too small, the equipment's aged, it's luster, it's not fun, it's not enjoyable, it's not big enough. The footprint of that is tiny compared to what we would need, so.
That equipment was old when we put it down there.
Yes, that, yeah, yeah. I'm glad, glad and maybe surprised that it's survived to this point, so.
It does seem like something the community enjoys, at least to some extent, so it'd be great to find a way of seeing how much, like Randy said, how much that's actually used. Did you have any more on the five-year plan, Jay?
I don't know if there's any questions.
Okay, yeah, any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion?
I'll move to the first. Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I lost track of mine, okay. Okay, item number nine on the agenda is schedule the date and time for the public hearing regarding the 2023 operating budget, and I believe we've got a date of November 7th at 5:00 PM. Is that something we need to take action?
Note the time change, that 5:00 PM is the early start for that meeting as well, November 7th. Yeah, I think you should take action.
Second.
You got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with no other items before the board adjourned by the call of the chair.
And good evening. Like called order the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for October 17th. Now that we do have a quorum with all Alderman present accounted for, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
For the religion of Jesus Christ, the United States of America, and to the Republicans who stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral strong.
Thank you. I'll note that we have a lot of items on the agenda. I didn't count them quite yet, but the first one is approval of minutes, common council regular meeting minutes from October 3rd.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Allen, any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, so to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we'll look for a motion to consent the agenda consisting of items one through eight.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Dolnick and Allen, any questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor, so to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we're on to public hearing, a public hearing regarding levying special assessments for the downtown West Bend. levying special assessments for the downtown West Bend Business Improvement District. Do you want to present anything before we open up public hearing? Okay. You don't have to.
Motion.
Then I'll open up the public hearing first to see if any public want to speak on the side, and feel free to come on up.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Allen. All's in favor of any of the public hearings, sort of a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And moving on to agenda items for consideration, number one, a resolution levying special assessments for the 2023 Downtown West Bend Business Improvement District.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Allen. Any questions on this? Hearing none. All's the favors, sort of a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two, approval of a resolution for the final platting grading plan for Creekside Edition number five, a 25-lot single-family residential subdivision located along north of Pin Tail Drive and east of Edgewater Drive in the southwest corridor, section 18, town 11, North Range 20 East by Mike Kerick of MKJCLC. And we'll start off with a presentation by our business and development planner, Jim Ranky. Jim?
Good evening. Today, I'm asking the council to consider a final plat for Creekside Edition number five. This is located north of Decorah Road, just east of River Road. This is just an extension of the overall subdivision that we have. It was about 274 lots. This is a 25-lot addition, creating two cul-de-sacs. So I'm asking the council to consider the plat, approving that resolution for the creation of the plat, and then also the developer's agreement, which is scheduled next. That agreement, is this a carryover of the previous phases that we've had for the construction of that, outlining the restrictions and requirements for that subdivision?
Thank you, Jim. I'll look for a motion on that.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Allen. Any questions for Jim? Seeing none. All's the favors, sort of a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then going along with this, number three, approval of the developer's agreement for Creekside Edition number five, 25-lot subdivision, blah, 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 blah. And I have a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Dolnick and Allen. Any questions? Hearing none. All's the favors, sort of a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we got our closed session item. Number one, entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to state statute, section 19.85, paragraph 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And this for a resolution to accept advanced land acquisition loan. If we could have a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Kayler and Allen. And if we could, please have a roll call vote. Roll call. Yep.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Berquist.
Aye.
Alderman Kayler.
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick.
Aye.
Alderman Aaronz.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
Alderman Dingtime.
Aye.
Thank you. We will be reconvening into open session shortly. All right, we are reconvening into open session, and we are on number one under that part of our agenda, possible action regarding resolution to accept advanced land acquisition loan.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Allen. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All's the favors, sort of a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And that carries. And last but not least, we're on reports. Number one, a report by Alderman Allen or Aaronz regarding the Tours of Commission meeting held on 10/12.
That'll be me.
All right.
Tracy's. Tracy's, she didn't want to do it.
Doing it, not doing it.
Tourism Tourism Commission met on October 12th here. We received reports of the from MOA, Friends of Park and Rec, Habitat for Humanity, Castle Guadalupe. And they discussed how they used our monies, the successes that they had, the things that they learned. We then launched into a review of the tourism budget, which is part of the city's budget, one of the enterprise funds. We approved that. We determined future meeting dates, and I didn't write those down and forgot to pull them out of my calendar. But we do have future meeting dates. The next one is in January.
January 7.
See, well, you could have done this. We also approved recipients of funding for next year. So any questions on the Tourism Commission? All in all, I it was it was a good meeting, and I think everybody that participated, they learned from each other on things that did work and didn't work. So I think that's going to be positive.
Great. Thanks so much. Next up is a report by Alderman Dolnick or Model regarding the Plank Commission meeting from 10/4.
I'll take this one. As you can see, we met on October 4th and had a couple of public hearings. One of them for a home photography studio, another for a set of stairs along the back of what building did you say? I forgot. I wrote it down, but I can't read it.
The building on Main Street that Augustine Financial is in.
Got you. Right, right, right. And nobody showed up for those. Extraterritorial map for the north side of Maple Dale Road approved. What was that? We had a CORDA, West Bend LLC brought Taco John's to the table. And we approved site plan with some revisions to be made, but that went well. And an old West Bend Barton Company, Barton Solvance, is adding, is doing an expansion. Exciting stuff.
Good stuff. And any questions from the model? Yes, sir.
Do we have any kind of a timeframe for when we can expect to buy tacos from John?
That's a great question. Jed, did we talk about that?
Darn.
I don't think so. Yeah, yeah.
That's as far as we know, that we're anticipating a spring '23, so it'll be mid ' '23.
Awesome. Thank you, Mark.
Great. And we have a report by Alderman Allen regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
Downtown bid board met here in council chambers, October 4th, 8:15 in the morning. We reviewed the minutes from the last meeting, the financial report, and the budget for next year, which we've already acted on as a council tonight. We then reviewed the holiday decorations. We're staying with David Frank, David J. Frank Company for this year. The installation is beginning on October 31st, which is a Monday. And there'll be some parking disruptions outside Settlers Park at that time. Then we moved on to the creation of the marketing committee. We've set up a committee to try and develop good strategies for dealing with the disruptions that are going to occur with the reconstruction of Main Street. How might we, as a community, encourage people to continue to patronize our downtown establishments, restaurants, and businesses during the construction? And then we talked about the tree lighting ceremony. Save the date. It's November 3rd. They have an emcee this year, a professional comedian, as opposed to the amateur comedians that we usually show up with.
That it's normally me. I think I'm the amateur comedian.
You've been replaced, Mayor.
Oh, thank goodness. Okay.
And in addition to that, we've got not only a comedian, there will be a a professional singer and a choir from one of the school, local schools, I believe, West Bend.
High School.
High School. Yeah, West Bend High School Choir will also be there. It's going to be cool. So dress warm. Come out on November 3rd. It's a Thursday. Yes.
Barton wants to try to coordinate with you guys downtown. When are you putting the decorations up?
I believe it is the 31st.
Halloween?
Yeah, two weeks from today.
Day after Halloween.
Okay.
Day after trick-or-treating, Halloween Day.
Okay. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Two days?
Trick-or-treating's on Saturday.
Oh, my bad.
Sounds great. And any other questions for Alderman Allen? Then we are at the end of our agenda. So open up if there's any other announcements for the good of the order. And having no further business for the common council, adjourned by the call of the chair. Have a good night.